Okay, we would like to start our work session today, Tuesday, August 13th. And we will start with a trail naming discussion. We'll turn the time over to Todd and Amber for that.
Okay, good evening. So as a little bit of a background, back in January 11th, 2024, the council gave general consent on naming a few of the trails. And so at that meeting, staff was asked to come back with more proposed names. And that's why we're here tonight, because we have another list of names to go over. And so in the guidelines in the packet, we've used one through 11 to come up with some new names proposed, and we'll go over each one real quick. Todd has the map up there to show you where each one will be for reference. So we're going to start with Trail 406-307. And we're proposing to name it Peregrine. It's named after a bountiful founding father, Peregrine Sessions. The trail crosses over Mill Creek Bridge Four, deeper into the canyon. And then the next trail, proposed name for 304-305, Stoker is the name of a historic school which was located in downtown Bountiful Square, and it's also a term used for excitement. The trail will be new downhill biking only from Elephant Rock to Bridge Three, crossing Mill Creek. Then the next trails that we'll talk about are near North Canyon Trailhead. These aren't numbered on the map, but Todd's going to point at them now. It's going to be proposed Canyon Creek for the bidirectional trail, and Sheriff Downhill for the downhill biking-only trail. And North Canyon was known for pressing problems during trail development, and a local user of the trail would patrol the area and resolve these issues regularly. So that's how we came up with Sheriff Downhill. And then Trail 417. Let's see, it's up north, right there. We're proposing that one be named Soda, short for South Davis, which serves as a connector trail further to the north there. And then looking at Trail 700, near Eggit Park, we're proposing this be named By the Way. It's named after a rock song by Red Hot Chili Peppers, which follows a lot of our rock-song-themed names up in this area. We've got other rock names, or sorry, rock-song names. And so this is a connector trail. And so we just thought By the Way, you know, leading to the boulevard, would work. And then finally, our last proposed trail name would be Trail 503. And we're proposing that be Encore, after concert endings. Again, this follows that same rock-song theme, and it would serve as a downhill option coming down to the trailhead. So with that, we recommend that the city council approve these trail names outlined. And we're here to answer any questions that you have. But that's what we're proposing.
Thanks so much for that. I know Councilwoman Bradshaw, you're very involved in trails, and you have some opinions on this, and I'd love to hear from the rest of the council as well.
Thank you, Mayor. If you haven't had a chance to try out 406-307, the proposed trail named Peregrine, it's open, it's available for the community to ride. It had been a little bit moon dusty, but I'm sure tonight's rainstorm will solve that problem as a newly constructed trail. I've had the opportunity to ride it a few times now, and I've got to tell you, it's amazing. It goes through some really gorgeous forested, deeply forested terrain. The crossing at Mill Creek is really spectacular. It is our only black trail in our trail system that we've proposed. And I think it's a really great new addition to our trail system. And so would encourage everyone to get out there, whether you hike, or bike, or trail run, or want to take a hike with a dog. It's a really great addition. I really appreciate the work of the Trails Committee in coming up with names and giving us also guidance on how we might name some trails. And I'm really excited about really a lot of these, and appreciate the way they've been thoughtful about how they've suggested names. I would like to suggest that Trail 304-305 be one that maybe we hold back for now. And it's going to be the, quite frankly, probably the prime jewel of our trail system in serving as this directional downhill from the traditional Mueller Park Trail and from Elephant Rock. And it's going to be just, I think, a really important trail for our community. And while the name Stoker does have a lot of community history and things like that, I think we could save that name in a number of different places. And this trail might be deserving of just a little more consideration for a different name that might come up in the future.
Thanks. Any other questions or thoughts on the names of trails?
Are we able to put any titles on any of the Bonneville Shoreline section, we know?
The Bonneville Shoreline section is a Davis County-constructed trail under their agreement with the Forest Service. It's also part of, obviously, the historic Bonneville Shoreline. So I don't believe we have any ability to change its name. It does naturally achieve, like, in the trail committee, people will say, "Well, I'm going to ride the bountiful section of the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, or I'm going to ride the South Ogden section, or I'm going to be on the Bonneville Shoreline section near Dry Creek and Salt Lake." So they get kind of geographic descriptions, but I wouldn't say they're not formally named.
Okay.
If I could make a comment, Mayor?
Sure.
I just want to thank the Trails Committee for coming up with all of these great names. I think they're all super thoughtful, and they're going to be... I have a few favorites on the list. But I think they've done a great job, and I like the criteria. And I fully support Councilmember Bradshaw's recommendation of maybe holding back Trail 304-305 and thinking about maybe using Stoker on another segment, and thinking about how we want to intentionally use 304-305 in some other potential way.
Thank you. That's great. Any other comments?
Mayor, I'll just say ditto to what Councilmember Price Hewish said. We appreciate the work that's gone into this, love the names, happy to hold Stoker for now.
Thank you. You know, we can't have a discussion about trail naming without mentioning our colleague, Councilman Bell, who just passed away. And we love him, and tonight, we are thoughtful of him as we make these decisions, as well as others. And Council, you can either speak about him now or later as we begin our regular council meeting. But I just wanted to acknowledge that we miss and love our friend, Jesse. Any other thoughts?
We reserve those for the next meeting if I could, Mayor.
Sure.
Thanks.
I think I'll reserve as well, but second, that we wouldn't be naming trails without the hard work Jesse Bell put into bringing this effort forward. He was amazing at finding friends and paths, and bringing the city along, and bringing the community along, and bringing trail enthusiasts of all types along. And we would not be thinking about names, and I wouldn't be gushing about how great the Peregrine Trail is without our friend.
Thank you. Yeah, his time on the Trails Committee and Planning Commission were so helpful for his work on the city council as well. So he's done so much for us. Any other comments on the trail naming, or do you feel like you have the direction you need?
I believe we do. I just have one question, though. Would the naming of 304-305 go back to the committee, then? Is that what you're suggesting, that we discuss it at a Trails Committee meeting?
That's not necessarily what I'm suggesting, I think. I think the council probably has some particular thoughts on that one, unless our city manager feels differently, or my colleagues feel differently. I think we have some good ideas on that one, since it is the most important of everything we are working on and what it ought to be named.
Okay, so just hold off until we get further direction?
On that one? That's the direction, right? Everything else, though, the council is in favor of all the other names that have been proposed.
That's all I need. Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Thank you both, Todd and Amber, and Francisco and Brock, for all of your work. Okay, we will move to talk about the general plan. I'll turn the time over to you, Francisco, to start this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just need to set up here so I can have Councilmember Price Hewish see what I'm about to show you. It's just a Word document. Councilmember Price Hewish, do you see my document up on your screen?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you. So thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity to work on our work sessions regarding our general plan, direction that we need from council. We last discussed this item during the last meeting that we had here, which was on July 9th of 2024, where the council held a work session discussion as the drafted transportation element was presented to you. And this was the second time that we did this. In that, back on May 28th, we showed you the element. And then on the 29th, we provided the guiding principles that coincide specifically with the goals that we have regarding transportation, which are included in this, which we also include active transportation. So at that last meeting in July, it served more of as an introduction regarding these goals. And each one, as you can see here on the first one, is divided into the goal and then the two more specific action. And then the very last section in each action has a cross-reference, if you will, to the active transportation general recommendation that was provided in that document, starting on page 55. No, it wasn't on page 55, but on that document, it talks about these guiding principles or goals regarding complete streets, street and pathway connectivity, walkable parking policy, amenity requirements, walkable activity center policies, multimodal integration recommendations, and programs and enforcement. So as we took these goals that were created by our planning consultant in conjunction with the various meetings that they had with the steering committee, as well as some of the work sessions between, not between, but the work sessions with you, the Planning Commission, plus the many interviews, plus all of the outreach events that we had, we were able to cross-reference every single one of our actions that we have on our active transportation plan. And this is what we're calling it, the bountiful version of that, in that the work in the active transportation plan was a little too specific, in that we really needed to keep it more in the terms of a comprehensive general plan. And we piggyback the same model that we have been utilizing for the trails in how we created that first master plan back in 2019. And then through subsequent changes, or subsequent, not changes, but subsequent actions that we need to the city, we have a sort of implementation plan that council reviews it, and then it tells us what we need to work on that year. So in going back to our discussion on July 9th, council did comment on the level of specificity of the drafted plan. We also had a quick discussion, not a quick discussion, but we had a discussion about some of your thoughts regarding the future of Orchard Drive. And then council also discussed the possible need of a future implementation plan as it's related to the general plan. That determination not finalized, but we started having that we needed to have that discussion. So what we would like to focus today is analyzing or reviewing each of the actions as they have been incorporated into each of the goals, which then match each of that guiding principle. So we have this level of hierarchy regarding our more specifics policies or goals that we have regarding each goal and guiding principle. So if the mayor and the council are okay with this, we'd like to start this review so we can move on to the next discussion point. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, I think that's great. Council? Okay, thank you.
So moving on, and for people following at home, I guess I could provide the reference page on the packet. We're on page 16 of our packet, the very top, the very first one, which reflects actions and goals regarding a welcoming community for everyone. The goal is to encourage the preservation and creation of welcoming and attractive neighborhoods. So we have action, the first action here, promote improvement and replacement of the urban tree canopy to enhance neighborhood walkability in summer months. This coincides with the complete streets policy from the active transportation plan. The next one is widen and/or buffer pedestrian facilities along high-traffic roads. Pedestrian buffer efforts should be balanced with traffic flow needs and be cost-effective. This also coincides with the complete streets policy from that active transportation plan. Could we take a break here and talk about these two actions?
What questions or discussion do we have, Council?
I have one, Mayor. Francisco, I've wondered if it would fit under this category Goal One or a connected community Goal One. So it could maybe be a case to be made that would fit better in that one as well. But here, where we're talking about widening and buffering pedestrian facilities along high-traffic streets, to me, this is speaking to when you're traveling along a street and you intend to continue along that particular street. But it doesn't speak to where we have cross-streets, where you may want to... And I know we don't want to list specific streets or coordinates in this plan, but sometimes it's helpful to bring up examples. So by way of example, 400 North and Orchard, 400 North and 200 East, 500 South and 100 East. These are busy streets, busy thoroughfares, and then we sometimes have these crossings. Some of them are kind of a mid-between significant crossings at lights. And if we're thinking about how to be welcoming, should we have something perhaps pulling from the WFRC plan about opportunities where there are, you know, signalized crossings or new specific crossing opportunities that would increase the walk shed? Would that fit here to kind of enhance that? So that as we consider how to achieve action item two under Goal One, we don't just think about someone who only walks along Orchard because it's not realistic. At some point, someone may want to cross to the east or the west side of it and continue on to a different, you know, neighborhood street. And how will we evaluate how to make sure those crossings feel safe? So, sorry, that was kind of long and rambling. As I've looked at it, it could fit here, it could fit under this other guiding principle.
Could I add something going along with what Councilmember Bradshaw said?
Sure.
So I just was looking at the language. I also had this concern or suggestion here on the second bullet point. And we have language on page 10 that I think is really good, but it only is referencing Main Street and the downtown area. But it kind of references the idea of mid-block crossings. It's at the bottom of page 10, that can foster more inviting and connected experience. And I think this guiding principle, this first guiding principle under complete streets is more universal and global to the whole city. So I like the language that is used on page 10 as it relates to the mid-block crossings, and why it's more inviting, more safe, more connected. And so I also had that thought, and thought that the language has already been kind of parsed out a little bit on the guiding principle as it relates to downtown.
If I could make a comment about crossing locations, most drivers expect crossings at intersections. And I think it's fairly well documented that mid-block crossings can be very problematic. So we want to be very strategic about a place where we would consider a mid-block crossing downtown. That may be okay, where traffic volumes are a little lighter and the speeds are much lower. But on any of our higher-volume streets, we want to be very careful about doing something like that.
I hear you and respect that point of view. Some of these are places where we have crossings marked, because they're at an intersection, they're just not at a major intersection, like on 400 North and 200 East, for instance. It is an intersection, but the street is so wide, it has an island in the middle. It's frankly scary and dangerous to cross. The Fourth North Orchard Crossing, I would say, a few of the corners are fine. They square up well. The crossing on the south side of 400 North, right by Porshing Grace Church, where you're required to awkwardly stand on a narrow island, feels very unsafe, and it discourages, I think, people from wanting to cross. And so, and that one would be our major signaled intersection, yet it feels really unsafe. The other example, further down on Fourth North, I think these would probably be very costly things to fix. So when we get to some of these elements, which might take us a while, since it's a future action plan, not an immediate action plan, I'm hoping that we will have some language in here that will help us think also about the safety of crossings, not just the actual sidewalk.
I'm wondering if, to me, it may fit a little better under the guiding principle, a connected community with complete networks for pedestrians, bicycles, transit, and vehicles. And then Goal One, balance travel modes to move people safely and efficiently through the city. To me, that kind of speaks to safety, to move people safely. And so I kind of wonder if there's just a phrase or something that we could add in one of those paragraphs that, you know, mention cross-streets.
Mayor Harris, that's exactly what I was going to show you. If we go to that connected community Goal One, first action. Oh, okay, I got removed. Here we go. So the order, we simply followed, the consultant simply followed the order of the guiding principle. So this is the third guiding principle that they proposed, and we have edited. This language is shown here in gray. Consider implementing traffic calming and safety countermeasures to eliminate or reduce traffic-related conflicts under balancing travel modes to move people safely and efficiently throughout the city. If we could, I think that this is the better guiding principle to address instead of the welcoming community. However, we can add, we don't want to get too, we don't want to get specific about which streets. We'll let the experts do that through the Planning and Engineering Office, through appropriate budgets throughout time. But I think if we needed to, we feel comfortable as written. However, if you feel that we need to add something regarding crossings, we can. But I believe this is the place to add it.
And I'm comfortable that it could be in a different, maybe we should number these different. So it's like, it's like hard to follow goal. We have multiple Goal Ones that are different headings.
Yeah, true.
But I'm comfortable moving it under this guiding principle. I went back and forth on whether it belonged more in one or the other. I would appreciate a more specific call-out to crossings as an important traffic-related conflict, rather than just something that feels like it's just about like the speed or the width of sidewalks, that it's, people at some point need to be able to move in a cross-streetway, not just along a street. And I don't want to put specific streets in there. I just wanted to throw out some examples of places where we know people want to cross, and we've sort of indicated they should cross there, but it's sort of like playing Frogger to cross there.
Thanks for that comment. I think that's well taken. And so, yeah, if you're comfortable with them, Council, what's your thoughts on adding something about that in the connected community?
I'm in support of that.
I like that in connected community, as long as we do have a call-out for crossings. And I think buffering is also good language that's used on page eight under the complete streets.
Okay, thank you. So as long as Francisco has that direction, then do we want to head back over to the welcoming community and just see if there's any other changes that anyone would request or any other questions anyone has about a welcoming community?
I have a question about the first action bullet item, promote improvement and replacement of the urban tree canopy. I just wanted to know kind of what everybody was thinking in relation to that. Is this in relation to changing our landscape codes that would require residents to? I mean, I know we're not getting specific here, but I cannot, I'm just... This feels very vague in the sense of, are we talking on just city-owned properties? Are we talking about residential properties? Because the urban tree canopy is really such a mix of both. And I'm just wondering what everyone's thoughts are about this. And we may clearly want to keep general language, but as far as tree canopy, how are we, how are you all considering this going forward as something that is required of residents or that the city would initiate on city-owned property?
Good question. Yeah, thanks. What do we see as the intent there?
I think it would take both of those and additional resources as well, if we're going to be intentional and effective at replacing what's dying out or aging out.
So Councilman Higginson, because this is a work meeting, I just want to kind of have a back-and-forth. When you're saying additional resources, is that, are you anticipating like something where there would be a tree program where we would partner with residents? Or it's, I love this idea, and I think it's important, but I also think it's important to kind of have some kind of, like, discuss... like discussion about what this potentially looks like on the city side and on the maybe partnering with private, um, owners. Private landowners. I don't know.
I've looked into several of the, uh, nonprofits, both the local and national that deal with, uh, trees. Encouraging tree, uh, planting and, and care. And frankly, there's not a lot available to us. Um, funding wise through any of those resources. I think it's going to take, uh, I think it's going to take some, uh, new efforts, maybe citizen-based to get something like this off the ground and successful. I'm, I'm not ready to, uh, I'm not ready to ask more of residents by way of taxes and spend city resources on it necessarily yet. I think we still need to study it and find out what might be effective here.
We do have some things that we've discussed. Um, Brock has talked about residents being able to buy trees at our price. We've ta- we've talked in the past about um, we have ordinances that talk about what trees are good to plant. Um, so I feel like we've done some things in this regard, but like, like Councilman Higginson said, there's more to be done that we probably don't want to get too into the weeds about or do, be too specific about.
Mayor, if I, if I could comment on that, those, those things that have been done or are currently being done or talked about. Yeah, those are great for, uh, general tree planting mojo. But they have nothing to do with the intentional replacement of the ever-dying-out tree canopy in Bountiful along our major streets, et cetera. So.
But you feel that this is a way to address that and in- address the intention, but you wouldn't want to be more specific than, than what we have here?
Not in this document. I think this is a great, uh, guiding principle. And somebody with a mind vastly superior to mine can hopefully come up with a way that we can implement a plan to put this, uh,
If, if, yeah, I think it's if it's, uh, something that's like, uh, to what Councilman Higginson said is, i- in this canopy is having a link to a program that's, that explains what, what is intended so that if it's a private residence that wants to do something, they can get the guidance and do it themselves or at least start to put some activity together to get this. Cause I remember talking about the, the tree program, but nothing was really advertised. So I don't think people even knew that they, even know now that there's something they can take advantage of.
We, we, we don't have one yet.
Yeah, so.
It's in process. We're, we're developing it and, uh, with, based on the direction we received at the retreat. So, so they can't yet, but it's coming.
Could I ask, um, could I ask, uh, Councilman Higginson a, a question? It follows a little bit of long lines of where I think Councilwoman Pricey is going. It seems to me we have, we have one, one tree canopy, but we have kind of two distinct levels of property. Well, I guess three. We have our, our city-owned properties and, and, um, obviously we're in a lot of control of, of those properties and, and where we've got, uh, aging, aging trees. We can, we can, um, focus on those properties very easily. Um, then we have our commercial properties would be one subset, and then we have our residential areas. And I, I'm wondering if, um, not wanting to get too specific, but should we think about some way to indicate that where we're in complete control on city properties? Um, you know, we, we in- intended this action plan to make this, you know, kind of a a significant focus to re- to improve and replace the tree canopy. In those areas, we don't control commercial or residential properties. Um, then our action item is to, to, um, seek ways to partner, which can be um, a number of different ways through uh, an ability to buy trees at the city's price or, um, you know, some way where we facilitate a larger connection to, um, nonprofits that might also be able to offer discounted trees or something like that. So that we're, we're bifurcating and putting emphasis where we can make um, the most effort with our own control and then secondarily focusing on um, private property where we have less control, but can maybe give incentives through various means to replace. I feel like that was also kind of rambling. Did, did you follow?
I did. I, I would, as you, as you spoke, I, I think that I would divide the city into three different subcategories than you did. Rather than the residential, commercial and city-owned property, and that is, uh, city-owned property, street trees and just regular residential trees. I mean backyard trees. I, I think that the thing we've got to be most diligent about is replacing the street trees that provide the, uh, canopy that makes everyone comfortable as we're using our public right-of-ways or rights-of-way. However, you're supposed to say that.
I think that is actually a better way to think about it that, that, um, now that, now that you've articulated it in a better wa- uh, better than I did, that the right-of-ways is shared, you know, whether it's in front of my house, but it's shading the tree, it's shading anybody who walks by or in front of your house. The, um, uh, maybe that's a, a better, a better way to place our emphasis is um, where they provide broad benefit. That's where the emphasis is placed. So right-of-ways or city parks, things like that.
Agreed.
Less emphasis on private properties backyard where those, that homeowner may enjoy the the heck out of the shade that tree provides, but it doesn't really serve anyone beyond that family.
And I like how, um, the current language kind of speaks to what you are, uh, you know, talking about in the, in that intention when it says enhance neighborhood walk- walkability.
Indeed.
Um, I think that's
Would we, uh, would anyone consider or, uh, adding language here? Like, um, just to what's already there, uh, identify opportunities for public-private partnerships or consider public-private partnerships uh, in this arena. It doesn't commit anything, but it kind of further just, I think, gives a little bit more direction in the, this, this is something that is, you know, that's going to involve all the different, however we categorize some of the different property types.
I, I, I like that we would seek to maximize our use of our dollars by matching it with other people's potential dollars. I think of, um, the Bountiful Rotary Club and that they have donated, you know, trees at the, um, at Washington Park and in other places and other groups have contributed trees and and that has certainly allowed us to save some of the city dollars and use them in different parts of the park. And so I agree with my colleague that, um, maybe, maybe it doesn't need to be awards, public-private partnership, but maybe it's, um, seek ways to maximize the use of, um, of tax dollars by, um, finding partnerships. So that we can take whatever, whatever dollars we have to put towards trees and, and double it with someone else's, um, philanthropic money.
Any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, if there's a way to incorporate that into that, uh, guiding principle or that action item, that'd be great.
Okay, sounds good.
I, I do want to say that I, the tree has lost the tree. The city has lost a lot of grand old trees. Uh, through windstorms, et cetera. And I think the city is doing a pretty good job of replacing those trees. Uh, and getting replacement trees on their way. I think there are some areas that we could do better at, but I, I don't want this to come across as, uh, a criticism of how the city is taking care of the cemetery and park properties because those trees are being replaced as they, as they disappear. So, anyway.
Thanks. Okay, um, does that sound good, Francisco?
Yeah, we could, we could add that language.
Okay, thank you. Any other, um, any other discussion points on a welcoming community before we move to the next one? Okay, let's move to, um, guiding principle, the, a business-friendly community.
We, this is just goal one.
Okay.
We, we got a, uh, as in part of, uh, well, guiding principle, welcome community.
Sure.
We have goal two.
Yep.
Support development of diverse housing choices and so, yeah, and then, and then the goal three. So, um, looking at, uh, this specific goal, uh, review network connectivity and gap closure and new projects by connecting existing development with future infill development areas.
What's infill development? What does that mean?
It's the few, the few sites that, uh, we the, the few undeveloped sites, the few vacant sites throughout the city.
Like the ten that we have or something like that?
Or maybe eleven.
Yeah.
That's what it means.
Okay, thank you.
So, so we just want to maximize as, as, as we look at, uh, say a subdivision application that we want to maximize how we look at connectivity. We want to have that opportunity.
So by way of example, um, wh- what you're thinking about here. There's a new, I want to say maybe five or six subdivision home on Davis Boulevard east of Creekside Park. And so when you talk about that connectivity gap, you're thinking about how we secured a trail easement to c- to connect Creekside to Davis Boulevard right there. That's, that's what you mean?
It, it could be a trail easement, but it, it could also be a, a typical vehicular road connection. Say Bangor Farms decides to develop. We just want to make sure that we get the appropriate bite at the apple in connecting roads. Walkway, si- sidewalks, trails to, to be able to connect to other streets throughout the city, if applicable. That's exactly it. But not just trails. It's, it's everything.
Getting around.
Correct.
Connectivity. Sounds good. Okay. Any other questions on that one? Okay, goal three.
The goal is to consider opportunities that combine additional housing with effective transit service. Action, amend the land use. Oh yeah, this is, this is, uh, we don't have a say in this language. This is, uh, one of the goals from modern income housing, uh, requirements that we have. A manland use regulations to allow for higher density or new modern income residential development in commercial or mixed-use zones near major transit investment corridors. So, um, we can change this, which means we have to change our modern income housing plan, which, uh, puts us in a, in a little bit of a bind. We just put this one in here is that it it's cohesive enough to function for, uh, a modern income housing strategy as well as a transportation strategy. So I, we recommend not changing the language on this one as the state gets very cautious. Should we change one word? We've learned that one, that ourselves. Uh, so this is simply low-hanging fruit in that it, it meets this opportunity for that goal. If you don't mind, Mayor and Council, we're going to move on to the second one.
Sure.
Partner with regional planning organizations to develop a plan, to develop a plan for land development surrounding transit stops to incorporate long-term transportation and mobility considerations. We can expand on this if necessary.
I think it's good. Um, any other comments from the council?
I'm happy with how it's written.
And, and the last one in this principle is to analyze parking requirements surrounding high-frequency transit areas.
It's good. We've already started that, um, with our recent
Downtown.
Downtown parking change. Um, so yeah, that's great. Thank you. Any other comments on that one? Okay. Next guiding principle.
Business-friendly community that serves the community with a variety of local focused services, shopping and entertainment op- and shopping, no, shopping and entertainment options. Uh, goal one, spark investment and development in downtown through strategic infrastructure improvements. The first action we have here, implement walkability improvements along Main Street. Improvements that reduce crossing distances such as curb extensions, bobouts and mid-block crossings can foster a more inviting and connected experience for the downtown area.
Sounds good. Any, any other thoughts on that?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Or Francisco, um, it seems like, and I don't have this right in front of me, but it seems like the BRT, the proposed BRT goes down Main Street. Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, yes, it does. It, it goes, uh, all along Main Street.
So, um, how do you feel like there's any, uh, concern? I mean, I, I love a mid-block crossing. I love getting people across back and forth, experiencing you know, the east and west sides of Main Street and getting to the parks and you know, all of the great things that are to be had there. But do you have any concerns from a planning perspective with the proposed BRT and that action item?
We don't have any concerns in that we can't work anything out with, with UTA.
Mm-hmm.
And, and we have, uh, daylighted our plans with them since the beginning. It, i- it would only enhance, uh, the locations where stops can be placed by putting them o- on the bobouts themselves. I, I don't, I don't see any mitig- additional mitigation that, that would need to occur doing. Looking at Lloyd, but I, I, I feel comfortable as is.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, any other thoughts on that one? Okay.
And, and we had one more under this, this, um, under goal two.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, coordinate parking and travel lane improvements along historic Main Street with pedestrian enhancements. It, it, it's kind of a, uh, dealing with Main Street in that the one we just talked about is more focused on the pedestrian side, while this second one is coordinating the bobouts with the travel lanes for vehicular traffic. We felt that it needed to, instead of being one monster principle in need, or actions, it needed to be two, but they're related.
Yeah. Great. Goal three.
Encourage land use regulations that support business opportunities and reduce barriers to commercial development. Analyze parking requirements in the downtown area for retail and restaurant uses. Ensure parking is adequate, but not overabundant.
I like that a lot. Any other, um, comments on that? Okay.
The next one is action, encourage the sharing of parking, particularly for adjacent uses with different times of peak utilization.
Sounds good. Okay, moving on to the next guiding principle.
A connected community with complete networks for pedestrians, bicycles, transit and vehicles. Goal one, balance travel modes to move people safely and efficiently throughout the city. We talked about this at the beginning as we were discussing a welcoming community. Simply, uh, consider implementing traffic calming and safety countermeasures to ele- to eliminate or reduce traffic-related conflicts. We're going to add language here regarding crossings and buffering language here. Uh, and then the next sentence, use temporary materials and pilot programs. Prioritizing locations of improvement should be data-driven with a focus on addressing potential collision hotspots.
That's great. And we have that data, um, from the, from the, um, active transportation plan.
Actually, our engineering office is always collecting, uh, data, uh, throughout the year or they're always, uh, fi- uh, yeah.
That's helpful. Yeah, that's great. Um, anything else on that one? Okay.
Uh, the next one, action, develop and apply, and apply complete street design principles for future roadway projects. Complete streets are streets designed to facilitate safe, comfortable and efficient travel for all modes of transportation.
Okay.
Just a question slash comment on that one. That, that includes future roadway projects include the rebuilding of roads when we take those out and rebuild them. Is that correct? We're not just talking about a new road somewhere in town that doesn't currently exist.
The, the intent is to cover all.
Okay.
We could always say future roadway projects and redevelopment or
Oh, if everyone's understanding that, that includes everything, that's great with me.
Yeah. That's the intent you?
The intent is to include everything. Uh, it, it simply gives an opportunity for the city to say, is there an opportunity to make this road a little better regarding complete streets? That's all we're trying to say here.
Every time there's a roadway project, whether it's a new road or an old road.
But not for overlays or?
Yeah, the overlay is slightly different project than a street rebuilding the entire street.
That's, that's, that was what I was digging at, so. I don't want to obligate us to bring everything current every time we, uh, chip and seal or overlay a street, so.
Would you liken this, Francisco, to, um, when we have a non, unconforming property and they're requesting some change and so we seek to bring them into as much conformity as possible, so we'll, you know, if they are not meeting our landscape ordinance, we'll get them as close to, or not enough parking if they can add three or four spots, so we'll, we'll seek to improve even if we can't always reach perfect with each project. Is that, that what, what you're aiming for?
Yeah, the, the example that you're using is for land, it's for land use and it's, it's always about not making the situation any worse. Uh, is the threshold that we utilize. So, um, I'm looking at, at Lloyd, I think, uh, it, it would be implied in all that he does that he wouldn't, if it's an identified feature, uh, in, in that he analyzes that needs to be improved, of course Lloyd is going to move forward as Public Works Director and try to enhance it.
I don't want to jump too far ahead, but at some point there's going to be a map with some identified corridors. And I think that, in my mind, this is the opportunity where this would be the guiding principle for those corridors to decide what improvements are you going to make to make this connected or improve connectivity or improve mobility for multiple users. It may not be a one-size-fits-all for every street reconstruction project we do, but, you know, we ought to be paying attention to the major corridors that get identified and, and identify what improvements make sense or, or meet the goals that are established.
Lloyd, could I ask, does the, does the term roadway projects denote construction? Like rebuilding a road and not just one of Charles's street lotion applications?
It's pretty broad.
Yeah.
It's pretty broad to me.
Is it overly broad? I don't, what, what I don't want to have happen is Charles needs to do an overlay on 500 South. And so Charles, all of a sudden, is required by some interpretation of this to provide traffic calming every mode of transportation and everything because he wants to over, uh, overlay or whatever on 500 South. You know what I'm saying? It, to me, it looks overly inclusive of roadway work. And I think we need to specify what kinds of roadway work in that are candidates for. Please, I'll stop rambling.
Not rambling, it's, it's, um, I, I think it's a, it's a great clarification. Lloyd, uh, alluded to this. Internally, we've started identifying we, uh, corridors where we think certain complete street principles work and where certain, and where they don't. As Lloyd said, it doesn't make sense to do the same thing everywhere on every street, even if we are reconstructing it. I know that that's what you're saying too. So maybe the solution here is to say that we develop and apply complete street design principles for future roadway projects as identified on a forthcoming, um, street plan. Something along those lines, that we're going to tie it to a future document that you all will adopt.
That's great with me. Yeah.
Thanks. Good, good question. Okay, um, moving on to, if everyone's okay with that, then we'll move on to goal two.
Thank you. Goal two, enhance access to and connectivity of non-motorized travel options. Work with regional partners to identify a non-motorized bicycle and pedestrian cor, corridor between communities.
That's great.
Moving on to the next one. Work with regional partners, including the county, UTA, and WFRC to develop strategies for increasing transit ridership and enhancing first-last-mile access to the regional transportation system.
That's good.
When we're saying regional partners here, are we, um, is that, are we talking like neighboring cities with which, with whom we share streets? Um, you know?
So, and then also the ones that are listed there.
I mean, I know that we're talking about UTA, WFRC, but, I mean, I, I think it would be, um, I think would be important to identify adjacent cities who we, with whom we share, you know, um, roadways. I mean, we don't share, but it's the same road that goes through our cities.
I, I think we can, uh, add more specific language. We think that we're covered in that the entity responsible for the, um, regional transportation system, we're talking about riding the bus, is UTA in collaboration with the many studies and funding that WFRC provides. But, but we could add a comment in here if council likes regarding, uh, working with our neighboring municipalities.
I, I would support adding that additional language. Um, I, I think, not to take away from what WFRC is doing or, you know, UTA and helping connect the BRT from Salt Lake through our city and up through Farmington, but there definitely are places like, uh, Banfield Boulevard or Orchard or 200 West or.
Davis Boulevard.
Davis Boulevard where we, um, we intersect our neighboring cities and, um, but our, our shared residents are moving back and forth between our cities all the, all the time for shopping or school or exercise. And, um, I think they've demonstrated some interest in wanting to, to, you know, uh, do some projects so that their, their, uh, connected access doesn't just mysteriously end where it hits our jurisdiction and, and vice versa. And, um, and we, it may strengthen some of our ability to draw down, um, matching grants and different things like that if we put in a, a three-city or four-city application for, for various things, so I'm.
I think it's appropriate for the action item above too, the non-motorized corridor.
It's probably, yeah, true, but yeah, so I, I mean, I'm comfortable with the staff.
Yeah, it might even.
But it, it, I think there, uh, an emphasis.
It might even, sorry, Kate. It might even fit better in that top one because that's more specific to non-motorized. But I guess, you know, motorized roads also, um, impact our neighboring cities, um, so. But I think that second action, it's, it seems like it's more about increasing transit, enhancing first-last-mile access. Which is, um, I think a little more UTA-focused. So, but I agree, neighboring municipalities are definitely a part of what, what we're looking at when we're considering.
So, so what I'm hearing is add it to the first action as shown on the screen and maybe remove it from the second one? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
What do you think, council?
I think it's appropriate in both places.
Some, some of them.
We're not binding ourselves. We're just saying we recognize the complete interwoven nature of some of our major roadways. And we want to be working with the municipalities and these other entities.
True.
I would support keeping it in both because some of that first-last-mile might be part of what's in number one. It might be a, um, a non-motorized path that helps you, you know, get to, um.
The front-runner station at Woods Cross.
Yeah, that's quite frankly really difficult to get to from Banfield if you're not driving there.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Any other thoughts on that?
Great with that.
Thank you. Good thoughts, um, Councilwoman Price-Hewish. Thank you.
So the last, uh, action for goal two is where appropriate and subject to capital improvement plan budget allocation, consider adding bicy, bicycle facilities such as bike lanes, physical buffers, et cetera.
That's great. Okay, moving on to.
Goal three.
Goal three.
Consider future multimodal transportation projects and initiatives in an updated transportation master plan. Action: consider street designs that enhance comfort and safety for travelers of all modes of transportation. I think this is a little redundant from the one that we already had. Uh, I think we're just trying to, I'll just say that.
Yeah, it's.
I, I had a question about that though, Francisco. Because where it says in the goal, where it says updated transportation master plan, is that something that exists separately from our general plan or it's the transportation component of our master plan update?
I believe that the goal was intended to be the, the same element that, that we've got. Uh, it, it was never intended to be the streets master plan, but it was, it was simply the consultant saying i, it's time that we review our, our transportation master plan.
I think that sounds good. Um, should we move to the next guiding principle?
This one is an active community with diverse outdoor recreation, recreational opportunities and access to our mountain backyard. Goal two, expand and connect mountain trail networks and connections with the urban trail network. Action: identify priority connections, especially at high-use areas such as schools, parks, and downtown.
That's great.
As you comment, this one goes in hand with the other opportunity for pedestrians or, or bicycle, uh, lanes. Is, in this one, it's more intended to connect us to the east side, the hillside.
Any other comments? Okay.
Action: regularly evaluate goal attainment in the 2019 Trails Master Plan and evaluate potential barriers to action, including funding, staff, and community buy-in.
It's really important. I like that.
Yep, good one.
Okay.
Analyze bicycle and pedestrian safety countermeasures at intersections of possible conflict. This one's also somewhat related to what we were discussing earlier with welcoming community and connected community.
Yeah.
Do you, do we think that, um, intersections is the right word? Now, I recognize that I just was advocating for safety intersections. And I don't want to take intersections necessarily out of this one. But, um, where we're looking at, um, reduction of conflicts um, within the recreation space and the access to our mountain backyard, I'm wondering if intersections is the right word versus other places where you have potential conflict. For instance, that might be, uh, official unofficial trailheads, official unofficial, um, places where users have decided to access trails or not access trails. Um, because they found it to be a different, um, shortcut. Or, um, you know, the directional downhill we're building, um, Mila Park that we discussed in the naming, that is a countermeasure to reduce conflict. It's not an intersection, it's, it's a, it's a trail we've built to reduce those conflicts. So, um, I want to reduce conflicts at intersections and other places.
Yeah.
So, should there be a different or other descriptor there?
So with what, um, Francisco put up there as kind of a working draft.
What about junctions?
Junctions?
I, I, I simply removed the intersection language and wrote, uh.
Nodes?
Oh, pointer nodes. We, we can remove nodes if you don't like.
I don't know, but I, I think you've got my idea that it's, it's not just intersections, it's these other places. I don't know what the right source for it is.
I think this one works, by the way.
I like that change. Strike through of, and I think you're there for me.
Points of conflict.
No, I left this first off. I need to take it out. Good catch, but I, we would have caught it if I could drive.
Great. Does that sound okay, um, Councilwoman Price-Hewish?
Yes.
Great. Looks good. Okay. Next guiding principle.
An efficient and resilient community with effective utilities and robust services. Maximize the resili, goal one, maximize the resiliency and fiscal sustainability of community services and utilities. Discourage high-density development in the eastern urban fringe to minimize cost of utility installation, maintenance, and other city services.
I have a question. I, can, uh, can we discuss what eastern urban fringe means? Does that mean our foothill zone? Does this mean anything east of current development?
It, it, it would be the foothill zone, uh, mostly identified by anything east of Banfield Boulevard. There are some exceptions here and there in our current zoning map, but that's how, what we would identify as the, um, eastern urban fringe.
I would like if that were. I don't think this is very understandable of what the eastern urban fringe is.
Would it be, so, um, earlier in our master plan process, thanks, Gary, for your giant folder. Um, we had decided in the different, um, neighborhood zones that certain zones wouldn't have density.
Correct.
Should we just name those instead of calling it the eastern urban fringe or?
If, if we're thinking of the general plan being the guiding document, then you get the zoning map, which is more specific. Um, which is why this is worded the way it is. It's intentionally more broad than naming the specific zones.
I'm sorry, by zones I meant like foothill residential, neighborhood residential.
Yeah. But that's, I'm just saying, it's, it's intentionally broad. We certainly can be that specific. Um, but that's kind of the, the point of the whole document is we talk about the general principle that somewhere along the east end, what we're trying to do is minimize with this particular goal. Um, we're trying to discourage high-intensity development. We then use the zoning ordinance and map to describe what those are. So, it, it's okay that there, that this isn't that specific because our ordinance already is.
Any other?
Fringe does sound like a new way to cut your bangs.
Any other, um?
Says somebody who has bangs.
Any?
Have bangs.
Any other ideas of language or are we okay with that?
A friendly suggestion is call it the hillside or even the foothill, not zone, but the foothill areas.
Eastern foothill areas?
I think that is just more understandable language, eastern foothill areas.
Okay. Does that sound okay, everybody?
That's great with me.
I have a question. Under the, the heading of utilities and robust services, EV auto chargers, that's a form of transportation and there is no adequate locations in South Davis County that has that. And I don't know if that's an opportunity to open that up as, if that even goes for here.
I think, I think that's important, an important discussion point, but I don't know that we want to get that specific in this document.
Okay.
Other council members' thoughts?
Councilmember Marie, I welcome that discussion in the future because I think it's important to a number of residents and becoming more so.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a great discussion item. Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, uh, the next guiding principle.
And this is the last guiding principle, a friendly community with lively community events and neighborly connections. Goal one, invest in public spaces such as Main Street and city parks where the community can gather. Action: consider installing secure and convenient bicycle parking in the public right-of-way near key destinations and transit facilities.
I had one thing I was hoping maybe we could include under the goal. Where it says invest in public spaces. Where it says invest in public spaces such as Main, as Main Street, and I know it's officially on Main Street, but I don't think it's what we consider quote-unquote Main Street. I was hoping we could say Main Street, City Campus, Banfield City Campus, and City Parks.
Will you repeat that, um?
Well, I was hoping we could include, because we call out Main Street and City Parks, but I think in another very really important public space is the City Campus.
So you would like to add the City Campus to that?
I would, especially as we hope and anticipate the library, you know, staying there and, um, or and so many essential city services.
You guys, you guys okay with that?
That makes sense to me.
Okay, sounds good. It's a good add, thank you. Okay, um, and then that action item, um, any, any discussion on that? I think that's a great one. Um, goal two?
Enhance community identity by improving the appeal of key urban spaces. Action, analyze front setbacks and allow driveway consolidation for commercial uses to encourage pedestrian access.
Any thoughts?
And, and, and this specific action is how it's specifically related to transportation. There are, this is not the only action dealing with goal two. And that applies to all of our goals that we have in our land use, um, uh, element or our housing element. This is not the only action for this goal. This is the, this is the one that is referenced, uh, via transportation.
Any thoughts?
No, I appreciate it reminding that the community identity, this, this is referring to transportation and accessibility, not how nice it should look or what goes into those setbacks, but that would be covered someplace else. You got it.
That's helpful, yes, thank you. Goal three?
Goal three, support events that bolster community identity, belonging, and build social capital. Consider temporary closures on 200 South from Main Street to 100 East in order to link Town Square to Main Street events. Again, we're not saying that we shall, we're saying is there an opportunity to review and consider this?
Mayor, I, um, had a thought about, um, that we should add 100 South as something we would consider temporary closures on. After attending, um, Summer Fest this past weekend, um, it's, it seemed to me that, uh, the best shade is clearly on 100 South with the taller sycamores. Um, it's where, it's where we're, um, whether it's farmer's market or food trucks or Summer Fest, we're concentrating booths and trucks and people there and, um, it certainly sometimes makes it awkward for the vendors or others that they can't, that they want to be able to load in and out, but they can't, uh, because we're still keeping traffic going on 100 South, so, um, I understand that 200 South we own kind of both sides, that's what makes it, uh, easier, but that gorgeous white building on the other side of 100 South doesn't get used as much on, um, Monday through Saturdays it does on Sundays and we're unlikely to have a big.
I've seen that, I've gone to farmer's market a few times and you have the ability to expand the farmer's market, which I hear has a lot of potential to do so if we had more space like that.
It's so nice, the shade, for sure. Did you have a comment?
Just a couple of maybe historical thoughts. Back when we were planning the Town Square, um, one of the reasons we added angle in parking on the south side of 100 South was so that we would not, would no longer need to close 100 South, and that we added so much event space at the Town Square, that was one of the, that was one of the ideas. Is that we would no longer have, we, we would, because at the time for the farmer's market, we closed it every week and it, and it did create conflicts with that um, neighboring use in the big white building to the north. They, they are surprisingly busy during the weeknights. We, in fact, regularly get, um, try to be a good neighbor and, uh, have tried to put up parking signs and things like that, um, to keep people from parking in our parking lot because they have conflict. They use it particularly Tuesday through Thursday nights. The other, the other, and I'm not saying we, we couldn't include this because as you pointed out, it's a great street to close for a lot of good reasons. But there is a significant amount of parking on First South, um, that a street is closed and has to go someplace else. And so those are just background considerations for, um, why 100 South wasn't listed in here. Don't disagree with anything Councilmember Brad Shaw said.
Perhaps because we're only considering it in the action plan, we're not mandating it. Maybe it doesn't, maybe, uh, in being a good neighbor to the neighbor in the big white building, um, it's not something that's every Thursday farmer's market, but it is something for, say, Summer Fest or something like that, um, but it's, uh, not only would it, would it assist with where we're concentrating people, activities, tents, things like that, I also think it would somewhat help with safety because you definitely have, um, people that are using it a- as intended as a street, yet you do have kind of, uh, people that are kind of, um, coming just outside of the park sidewalk, you know, boundary if they're in line or waiting for a food truck or, you know. So we're kind of getting people partway into the street already naturally.
Yeah, I think it's a good, um, conversation and while we're at it, um, I really like the idea of considering temporary closures on limited blocks of Main Street, like for example for the, for chalk art. I've heard them say that for safety reasons, um, with the artists on the sidewalk close to the street and with so many, um, so many pedestrians, I've heard them talk about that it would be nice to be able to close a part of Main Street and I know that that is, oh, there's a lot of considerations, um, Gary, maybe you could help with what those are. I mean, obviously, you know, police and, and pedestrians and the businesses on Main Street and what are some of the issues that we look at?
Yeah, Main Street's more challenging because, uh, we have business parking, um, it's, it's really disruptive to the businesses. Um, we get feedback that, uh, fewer closures are better. We have transit routes on Main Street that, that have to be rerouted anytime we close Main Street. Um, so that, that north-south closure of streets is more challenging than the east-west closure between sort of Main Street. And, and the other idea is that we are trying to, um, enhance accessibility to and visibility of Main Street and sometimes, not that, again, it's very similar to what we said before, you couldn't occasionally close these for big events like we do currently for the car show. But, um, we want to, you want to make Main Street as accessible and easy to get to as possible and all the businesses there, so. That's why we kind of discourage closing Main Street and invite people to look to other places. Those are some of the considerations.
Yeah, that's good. Um, I guess, um, it seems like in other, in other big cities that I've visited when they close a portion of a street and they have maybe some eateries out on the street or they have booths or whatever it is for festivals or, um, I, I wonder if at some point there would be a place for something like that temporarily or, or what have you, but, um, that's just something that we can consider in the future, but any other, um, thoughts on this idea about street closures?
I would support the considering temporary closures and, um, especially as it's been mentioned other places in the document earlier, in the discussion, um, kind of the idea of piloting something and then review, and I think that's something that could certainly happen here where, um, I don't think the intent is for it to be regular, weekly, or anything like that, but, um, you know, but then could be, uh, subjected to review and reconsideration. So, I think it's a, I would support it, this action item.
Okay, um, council, do you, do you like it as written? Do you want to change? Do you want to make changes? Do you want to edit it?
I wonder if this would give our city manager, um, any heartburn. Um, what if we consider just temporary closures of, uh, 200 South, 100 South, and Main Street in order to link Town Square and Main Street to significant city events? So, so that we draw the bar high to consider uh, you know, all three or two, three, three, um, that they have to be significant events, the combination of those.
I'd support that.
How's, how's your heartburn level? How's your eastern urban fringe?
Moderate, moderate. No, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty comfortable with that. I, I would prefer maybe not to include Main Street, um, just to avoid the idea that, um, it's a, it's a preferred street to close. I think including from Main Street to First East is, is just fine. And I don't have any heartburn at all about 100 South the way you explained it. But, but we will do what the council wants to do. I, I know what your intent is. The intent is not to diminish any, um, accessibility to Main Street. Heartburn level very low.
And maybe, I mean, these are all for future discussions, but, you know, maybe for chalk art, it's, it's a section of Main Street, but not all of the three days, maybe it's
Friday night.
Only on the, yeah, the busiest night just because we're, we want it to be safer and maybe then we're putting food trucks or something in the middle of Main Street.
And it's Friday nights when the businesses are closed.
And, and that, until we solve that problem.
Yeah.
Well, this year was unique because this was the first year I had seen, well, it didn't rain and, um, the street performers that came out, I mean, there was a lot more that, of people that took advantage of coming out and I think that creates, it creates the problem that we address in this is it gets more people on Main Street, gets them to write that community environment on that night.
Good, um, yeah, good discussion, for sure. Are we okay with this thing?
What if we took out any designation of specific streets, had something like consider occasional temporary in order to link Town Square and Main Street events? Or for specific events, I don't know.
I like that.
Fine, I think that's good.
Kate's probably flown better than that did. Well, I know her presentation flowed better than that did.
Councilwoman Price-Hewish says she likes that. I think that sounds good. Everybody okay with that?
I think adding significant event to it makes that easier.
So it's, it's not, it's, it's for special occasions, it's not all the time. Great. Okay, everybody all right with that?
Um, there's a map on the last page. Is the map you were saying might come in the future, what is that, this map or is that a different map?
No, that map is our current Banfield, uh, master street plan. It was, it's simply we want to include it as part of the element, the entire element. That's why it's made into your packet.
Thank you. So, um, did we make it through what we hoped to make it through today?
We did. We made it through the entire element.
Hey, we did it. Good job. Thanks, everyone. Good discussion and we'll be back in just a few minutes for our regular council meeting.